All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you for taking the time out for this extra session workshop to take a look at the proposed future land use map update. This meeting is going to be really, really informal on our own. But I have other meetings after this, though, but it is an informal meeting for us to really just be able to sit down as a group and take a look at the future land use map update that we were proposing as well. But, you know, what we found is that it's a whole lot better if we can present what's being proposed in this setting as opposed to just standing up by the map and pointing at things. So what we're going to do, the thought for the day is we'll put the map out on the table. Staff will be sitting at the table, sharing a couple of concepts, whether you're sharing economic development, opportunities, those kinds of things, talk through the map, talk about the different land use characteristics. But it's really open for you guys to ask questions. So what this map will do, it will generate questions about future projects that maybe you heard about, projects that we recently approved through our process. So that's what it's designed to do, is just to sit down and ask as many questions as you can so that we all will be comfortable with what we are presenting to the council. A quick history of the future land use map, you know, adopted in July 2017. The comprehensive, the 2035 comprehensive plan was adopted in July 2017. A part of this future land use map, it was designed for, I'm sorry, the 20-year vision for the growth was 12 years remaining, 20-year vision growth, 12 years remaining on it. So for 12 years, we believe what we're looking at right now, although we believe it will change and have to be revised again as things move along, but it is 12 years remaining on that 2035 comprehensive plan. Plan elements include major functions of Murphysboro, land use of the four major functions as defined in chapter four. So what we're actually updating and proposing to be updated is actually chapter four, which is a land use area that has the future land use map within. We're not proposing to update the 2035 comprehensive plan. The future land use map is designed to be used for a tool for city leaders to inform land use and development decisions. One of the things we do, we get a lot of calls throughout the week. Every day we get calls about, what do you think about this use? What do you think about that use? Do you think this will be a good development? And one of the things we believe and we have found that the land use map allows us to be consistent across our department when we go to that land use map and say, this is designed for this type of land use. So that's what the future land use map is designed to do, ensuring efficient, consistent use of land to accommodate growth and development, better capture vision and needs of the city. A couple of things that this plan department battles all the time and planning commission as well is we battle vision versus market. You know, what's the market saying, right? So townhomes is a hot commodity, multifamily is a hot commodity, but somewhere along the lines, there has to be a vision for Murphysboro, and that's kind of what we manage, planning commission, council, and the staff. We manage vision versus market. The future land use map gives us an opportunity to really take a look at vision and keep that moving. The vision that council, planning commission sets is really what that, it's a tool for us to do that. Market's going to always rub up against vision. One of the things the future land use map will also allow us to do is figure out, do we want land to sit, right? Do we want it to sit and wait on the vision to catch up? Or do we just develop out whatever the market says develop right now and then not have anything and have Murphysboro, full of townhomes, or multifamily, or industrial, or whatever that is. So that's the other thing is we're looking at the future land use map, I would really keep that in mind, this future land use map is really, that's what it's really designed to do. How do we balance that vision versus market? But that's all we do all the time when we're sitting down and getting proposals brought to us. Protect adequate supply of land for diversity of land use is a requirement of life and efficient coordination, coordinate land use and infrastructure needs. What is not very important, what is not, is not a wholesale change to 2035 comprehensive plan, it's not a zoning map. So it's land use. So when you look at what we're sharing with you and what we presented last time, it's only land use. It's what, land use, so zoning, this doesn't have, it doesn't have much to, other than us being consistent as a group of following it. But not a zoning map, it's not ready to fix or in stone. I shared earlier, it's 12 more years on it, and we realize that nothing stays stacked in. You know, the vision could change, market could change, but we want to be able to do that, we want to be able to do that with some thought being put into it. Not meant to be changed without a study and approval. Key points, function as an accurate tool for establishing infrastructure to evaluate potential growth and development and annexation. We'll talk about that when you hear something called a service infill line, or it'll be reintroduced to you as we sit down. That's going to be very important, ask as many questions about the service infill line. That deals with our annexation, how far are we going to, how far are we going to annex out in the city of Murphysboro. A collaboration and input from stakeholders during the future land use map updates, and it will be talked about again, but there's been a collaborative effort putting this future land use map together. The current future land use map was done in a vacuum with individuals that maybe didn't bring other stakeholders in, like fire, police, schools, parks and rec. We brought all those guys in on this future land use map. So as you look at what's going on, everybody's had a chance to take a look at it. To provide consistent messaging related to land use and development, I think I've talked about that one. It's one of the major things for us in our department is for us to try to give a consistent message so that every area you call into, you actually get the same message about what that land use is actually, that you propose for. Now let Kevin talk about the new elements about the proposed future land use map, and then after that, we'll, if we get three planning commission at this table, four at that table, doesn't matter which ones, Margaret Ann will be sharing from that table, and Marina will be sharing at this table, and we really want to just have a real good dialogue. We'll drive some of the conversation with real, we really want you guys to be really comfortable with what this future land use map update is, looks like, because that's what we present to you in planning commission. We present that it's consistent or not consistent with the future land use map so that we can make sure that we're being consistent in our messaging as well. Just real quick, each one of these parcels have been looked at, one by one, we drove down and looked at all of these one by one. So this hasn't been done from a 30,000-foot, it's been done looking at each parcel, not with any particular development involved. It's been looked at as to what's the highest and best use, what is the vision for the area that we've heard council talk about. It's also been looked at from rolling services, it's also been looked at from police, fire, solid waste, school system, they've also looked at this future land use map. Really important to us was not to have auto urban in an area that Darren probably can't serve with sewer, Manchester Highway, where Darren says my sewer is very limited. So we brought them in to make sure that they were able to overlay and talk about those as well. So we just wanted to make sure that that's the approach that we took as we moved forward. Thank you. Any questions?
Can I just ask Greg, so when you did the big picture look and driving around and whatever, did you go ahead and think about, I mean, when you're looking at everything that's around it and you've got a vacant parcel and you're trying to decide what's the highest and best use for that parcel, do you think about the things that are already there, or are the things that are already there are really so run down, they really need redevelopment? Are we looking at what that whole area, okay?
In that conversation, Marina and Margaret Ann were talking about mixed form housing, and they're talking about neighborhood compatibility areas, and so Fourth Avenue, First Avenue areas, we did just that. We looked at those houses, and owners are actually putting back into those houses and building them back up. But if you go a street over, a couple of streets over, you've got Phil Road where they're actually a great opportunity to redevelop. So those areas, we actually did auto urban, those kinds of things, but across middle Tennessee, Boulevard, those houses in that area, we looked at those opportunities to keep that neighborhood the way it is. So you will see those types of opportunities in there. So absolutely. We also included in the North Holland study, we actually, you'll see a hash mark, they'll talk about that, there's a hash mark for that, so we can keep that study compatible with what we are proposing in our future land use map so they don't compete. So if somebody calls in and says, I want to do this, it's going to be in line with the North Holland study. The Bottom study, the exact same thing, all those things are going to be in line with what we currently have as a tool to be able to develop those out in the same manner.
And you all felt like those studies are still accurate or up to date, or did they need updating?
We did, we looked at what they were proposing, like on the Highland side of things, and it called out for mixed form housing. I mean, that mixed form housing still fits very well with that area. The Bottoms and what it called out, entertainment districts, those kinds of things, it really, it really still was in line, and actually is what we're utilizing to, on that Broad Street side, Town Creek design that Greg and Smith and Greg and Mona are doing, all of that's kind of moving toward that, toward that study. So absolutely. Any other questions? Before I turn it over to Kevin.
Thanks Greg. I'll start by saying that this has been a labor of love for a while, and I'm really excited to be at this point. You know, we work really hard with city staff, and it's been a real pleasure to work with the whole city staff. I want to point out Matt Hamilton over here, he sits in the corner, he's a real quiet guy with Reagan Smith, but he's had a big involvement too in shaking out the map. And Greg said we had to do this before Christmas because this is going to get us on the nice list, not the naughty list, so we'll see. So I wanted to highlight real quickly some things, but you know, we do want to leave room for dialogue. A lot of this is about hearing back from you and having conversations, so I'll try to keep this kind of brief. But some of the new elements in the plan that I want to highlight, there's five economic target centers. Those were done in correlation with an economic expert, that kind of, actually two different economic experts that kind of guided us to places in the city where you really want to start to focus on job growth, you want to protect those areas for more than just, you know, typical commercial or residential development, you want to create job centers. That includes the downtown area as part of that. So that was one really different and important part of this plan that wasn't in the old plan. We also created what we call a future study area, and you'll see everything that's like in a light green that's outside of what our infill service line is. That is really not designated with any land use at all. And the idea isn't that it can't be developed, do I need to put a microphone on?
No, you can.
Okay. The idea is that it doesn't need, it doesn't necessarily need to have development happen, but it can. But there's no existing land use category applied to that, and that was very specific because what we're saying is if development happens in this area, it should be carefully considered, and it should be evaluated at that time. We don't want to paint, you know, that picture yet. We want to leave that area for future study, just what it says. The infill service line is a very new thing, and that's, it's really a change in the philosophy of the city from, say, what I've seen over, you know, 10 or 15 years ago. It used to be, we will build it, right? We're going to follow the corridors out, we're going to keep growing out, and then our tax base will come in and provide us with what we need. Now I think this map is really saying something different, which is, there are certain areas in the city we want to focus, we want development to really focus in those areas, we want the quality of life to remain strong in those areas, and we can't just keep coming, building tentacles out towards infinity without having some negative impacts on our service areas, on our infrastructure. So that's a change, that's kind of a different approach too. And then there's several new land use categories, and I really want, you know, the staff to dive into those into some detail because they've worked very closely on some of those. And then there's also an addition to what we call a transition policy. So when we created this, just like Greg said, this is not a zoning map, but it is supposed to create a pretty strong vision. The intent is that this is the vision for the city unless there's a good reason to do something different. So we wanted to give you some background on what some of those reasons might be in the transition policy, so as you're looking at an area and you're thinking about changing it, it's with the understanding that yes, we can change this map, but let's think about some good reasons as to why. So we wanted to kind of frame that up a little bit. So economic target centers, I don't know if you want to cover this with the maps?
Yeah, let's cover it with the maps in detail.
Yeah. We'll just talk about what some of these areas are, we'll let Marina and Margaret Ann and Matt kind of dive in. I'm going to touch on them real quick. I talked about the economic target centers, you'll see those big orange circles, the future study area, that's this line is the, now we call the limit, you know, really the service infill line. And so anything light green is future study. And then service infill line is this dark dash line. We thought really hard about that line, put a lot of thought, you know, Greg had mentioned, we drove around, we looked at properties, we got a lot of feedback from stakeholders, we got a lot of feedback from developers and consultants as to what, where that line made sense. And then auto urban, I'll touch on it real quickly, this is the highest density residential that is currently in the land use categories. It's different than your zoning, you know, your zoning is stay out of urban. But we wanted to look at some very specifics about what could happen in that related to attached, i.e. townhomes or other type of development, residential developments as opposed to single families. So I think Margaret Ann, were you going to cover that part when you were looking at the map, or you want me to dive into some of it now?
You can dive into some of it now, we were going to talk about that.
Okay, great. So some specifics of that, because I think there's a lot of discussion about this, so I want to make sure to frame this up. The idea is, yes, townhomes are needed. We've got existing zoning that allows for townhomes, but anything that's zoned in the future for townhomes, let's think about maybe a development pattern that isn't just all townhomes. So that's what we've done when we set up this district, is the idea is that there's a maximum parcel size of 10 acres that could allow for 20% acreage in townhomes, or 40% of unit count in townhomes. And then there's transitions that have to happen around the edge of that property if it's developed. The idea is that it doesn't go right from, say, a certain size single family lot to townhomes, right, basically to it. So that transition has been set in, and then also the idea is that anything that's happening in this district, we're suggesting would be good to have a planning unit development attached to it. So you can get into some very specifics about the quality of what you want for open space, for connections, for multimodal opportunities through the property. And then, you know, the other thing is just that whole idea that, you know, here again, it's not a zoning document, so we're not saying these numbers have to be hard and true and fast in every single site. That's kind of the starting point we're suggesting you want to use as a lens when you're looking at it, and then look at specifics of the site. Maybe there's fluctuations at 10% or more on those numbers, but that's kind of the starting point that we're using. And then, you know, we have some good questions come from some of the development community that said, what are some examples, a community where this type of formula has been applied that you think might work? So we looked at Pocket Station as one, and River Landing as one. Now, they're not exact numbers, but they get you kind of in pretty close where like Pocket Station is 20% townhomes by the acreage, 46% by units for townhomes, and the rest is single family. River Landing is a little higher on units, like 67%, 40% is in land that has townhomes, and then 60% and 33% for single families. So those were examples of places we thought, hey, that's, you know, that's an example of where this formula has already kind of happened and worked pretty good. All right, mixed form housing, and then we, you know, here again, staff worked really hard on this, and the whole idea is in the downtown area, we think that it shouldn't be always exactly done in the sense of townhomes, single family, duplex, there can be a mixture of housing, but the idea is the form. The form of that housing kind of matches its surrounding, matches the character of the downtown, or matches the character of some of the residential districts near the downtown. But it can still allow for a whole mixture of any type of housing, once you know that you, you feel like it fits in context with what's around it.
Kev, can you go back to the previous slide?
Yes, sir.
So when we say 20% maximum development acres in townhomes, 40% maximum units in townhomes on a 10-acre size parcel.
Right.
So do you have any idea in your head, so we're saying 40% maximum units in townhomes on a 10-acre tract, what, so how many single family units would you have to have in coordination to meet that requirement? Is that, do you follow what I'm trying to ask?
Yeah, I mean, it would all depend on the unit type and the density proposed for each of the single family and the townhomes, but the whole idea is that, you know, not more than 40% of your side acreage would be developed in townhomes. Did I answer your question, or is it, are you looking for a number?
Yeah, I'm looking for a number. So if you had 100, if you had 100 townhome units, how many single family dwellings are you saying that that would take to meet that requirement? So 40%, then you're going to have to have 400 houses?
So Toll Brothers is a great example, probably the closest example, I think. How many townhomes do they have, Margaret Ann?
They have a little bit more than what we're doing.
11 acres?
Their mix wasn't quite there.
Yeah, they were 70/30, I'm just trying to get Ken driven to some thought process as the closest thing we had. So I think Toll Brothers had 70/30, they had 29 single family detached and how many, 110 townhomes?
Okay.
But they were, they were 70/30.
Right.
We're driving a 60/40 mix of the same, same.
That helps me.
That gives you a kind of an idea of how it's laid out.
And of course, you know, it's not saying that you have to, you have to use that mix, and obviously you can, you can go lower than that in your townhome. Or, as I said, if we felt like there were certain qualities or value that you wanted to stretch those numbers up a little higher, we could do that as well, but that gets you in the neighborhood.
Right.
Okay.
I just want to understand the math.
Right.
And any of the auto urban developments that we're seeing are exclusively single family detached, since this would, you know, the auto urban would also, also includes like, you know, your 5,000, 6,000 square foot, single family detached lots, which we're, you know, we're seeing more of these days, you know, without the townhome product.
Right. The thought Ken on this was really as we looked at Thompson Lane, all those small skinnies, those real narrow lots that are shot down, we were getting townhome requests on those to just lay townhomes across 10 or 12 acres or whatever. So we're continuing to be able to add a housing mix ownership, but also provide them with some opportunity to gain some density. That's really what we started looking at. Most often we get them in and they come in, and because we don't have a number to start with, they come in with the max, and then we just arm wrestle them down to what we believe is a good quality of product throughout the process. So we start with a number, and then they say, well, I'm adding amenities, and now my quality of life for this whole development looks a whole lot better, so thank you.
So we, did we answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, great. So go ahead and back to the mixed housing. So we're pretty excited about this opportunity because I think it's answering some of those questions about the fabric of the neighborhoods surrounding downtown and the downtown area, but still allowing some opportunities for mix of housing. And actually, I know we got some comments from some of the development communities that they really like this district as well, and maybe there might be, you know, other places to apply it in the future, but at least for now, it's really kind of where it's targeted, is in that downtown area. All right, employment generating, this is an important one, this is a completely new district, and this, again, was fashioned with a lot of input from some economic advisement with some consultants that were helping us out. And the idea is that, as Greg had mentioned, as an area grows, as it develops, you want a balance. You want a balance of housing, you want a balance of jobs, of retail, commercial, all those things, parks, everything at once. So the employment generating areas are, the idea that we're really going to encourage job growth type of development to happen first, not as an appetizer. And we're going to try to target these areas and really bring in, you know, some mixture of development that would say, we're going to bring jobs to Murphysboro. I know there was a lot of that discussion back when the gateway was created and still going on now, but we think that discussion needs to extend to other areas as well. So this is all about bringing in jobs and not just, you know, kind of replicating jobs, but how could you bring in some retail, public space, residential amenities around the jobs, and how can you create a target that is really more office oriented, regional operations oriented, research and development, those types of technical and high and professional jobs.
Two more questions.
Yes, yes, sir.
Just a comment. When we do this and when we introduce a new project, it would be good if your team sets up a new with IDU and the chamber and go over that, because that's exactly what we're targeting. So if we know about what your, what your vision is for that, then we can really target.
That's a really good point.
And so is that something we can do now, or?
Well, you can, so we have one more meeting this year, and then we have, you know, start in January, we have meetings starting in January.
Yeah, we'll mind.
You can get on, you can get on schedule, yeah, you can probably get on a simple meeting.
What we'll do is, we'd like to get, so December, what Kevin talked about next steps, we'd like to get it approved by, approved by planning commission before we get it out and moving. It's, we want to be able to back in, and so once we get through all the approval processes, then I would suggest that after that, then get on our schedule.
Absolutely.
Okay, so next slide. Another new district that was created is Business Invaded District. It's somewhat similar to the EG district in that here again, it's industry and job based, but the idea is that you have a business park development. This does not allow for residential, we really want to reserve some land for specific business development and encourage that innovation and investment. We're hoping, you know, these are some great sites, it'd be great to get some partnerships with MTSU, with maybe some outside companies that are coming in that want to generate innovation. These are great properties for that kind of thing. Once again, we're suggesting that this really warrants more of a master plan or pilot approach, not just kind of parcel by parcel. And then, this is just the overall map, and you'll have a chance to see that around the tables and dive in, and we'll leave plenty of time for that. But the last slide, I'm going to touch on real quick as far as the changes. You'll see in pages three and four in the summary report, we might even listen to things that were kind of good indicators of why we might want to change this map, or even think about considerations as it flexes. Understand something, we, we had really parcel by parcel to go by, and we had to start with some kind of puzzle to piece together, right? And those pieces were set by property boundaries. In some cases, those property boundaries are going to change, you know, some kind, we're hoping that sometimes it'll be consolidated, and it gives you more property to work with as you're looking at it. So understand that those boundaries along property lines, they may change when you have, you know, some collaboration going on, maybe between properties, or properties that are consolidated. Arterial streets and collector streets, you know, at some point, do you match everything right across the street from what's already there, or do you think about a different vision? Well, main intersections in those collectors and arterials are places where some of those transitions might occur. Maybe something has happened differently across the street that was more, you know, thinking about a change. You know, this is a flat map, as much as I wish we could say it's considering all topography and everything underground, and it doesn't, but we have kind of looked at parcels and thought about those things, but there's a lot of times when geographical, environmental, infrastructure conditions might warrant a change in the development when it comes in, looks at very specific things about the slide. Land use development patterns change, you know, as Greg had mentioned, you have market conditions, you have certain trends, you have things that happen. We understand that this is a living, breathing document, so there might be a reason that you look at different development patterns than what happened when this map was formed. And then, you know, a property might come in and they say, we want to change this land use map. Well, I think almost every time, one of the main questions you need to ask is, okay, we'll look at that change, but is it supporting the city? Is it helping the city's quality of life? Is it matching up with our infrastructure needs? Could the development maybe help achieve, you know, some infrastructure that we hope? Is it, there's opportunities for parks or open space that weren't considered when we did the land use map? So that's kind of a, just a lens we think that you should put on every time there's a change considered, which is, not only is this maybe good for the development, but how does this also translate to something good for the city? Because those are the balances that you've got to make. So really, you know, each, each transition should be evaluated based on the site, specific surroundings, and your current goals of city leadership, and whatever's going on with concurrently zoning requests. But, you know, we hope, or we believe that we've given you a tool that should have some teeth. There should be a reason to change it, not just kind of like, okay, well, we'll change the future land use map because that's what the development, you know, rezoning request is. Somehow the two should kind of mesh, and you should be able to kind of work it through together. So that's it for me.
So I want to jump into the map. We, and I want you guys to press it, take a look at it, and ask as many questions as you can. We'll go back over those four items that Kevin talked about, economic development, business innovation, all those things while we discuss the maps. So let's, if we could, yeah.
I was just gonna mention, if they think we're going in the right direction, we will need them to vote and schedule a public hearing on the changes that we've made.
All right. Yeah, if we can get two more planning commission here, and two there.
You stay right where you are.
Okay.
Does make a good scene.
Heard no salt.
What is this?
I hope it all-
Anybody come in here speaking?
Kelly Nita, that's good night. Pink on this one. The authenticity is a lot worth with the project I work on.
She speaks the same language when I go to her.
Where do you print these? Keep them.
I have a lot.
Nice.
It is nice.
I was looking for South Church Street. Go straight down South Church and then you can navigate. Sorry, that's his pathway. This is- The MTSU, where did it go? Our verse.
Switch places.
This is MTSU, sorry, this is MTSU. And on that side, this is the area that does not have some larger parcel property. Yes. What I think what they were looking at is the areas for the broadest renovation. This road road looks like a road. What areas in our city are really still have some larger mass. Oh, wait, with regard to access to the highway was really important. It runs parallel to, oh, this is the road. Potential for the road. So the business innovation is more of an industrial, especially in light of work and Nashville, there's gonna be a lot of- That's true. It goes to that, where the convalley follows Oracle, Oracle follows Amazon, and so we're starting to see more of them. Nashville's pretty built out, so we're gonna be looking at places- And over there is the city property that we're trading. For where a lot of these companies will end up. So we're wanting to have an opportunity for them to come, develop, and yet still have these old watches and go to the highway. This is the avenue. This is Clary. This is Toll Brothers. It doesn't allow for housing, but housing, the idea is that it does have housing nearby. This is a drainage pond. Work balance, work balance kind of reach you. We had, we plotted the two big- You know, traveling long distance. Commercial is also a component of that, so people have places to- MF is- Multi-family. So one thing that's important on here is-
There's probably two or three major landowners that are right there, okay?
What is kind of buried a little bit is-
Are they part of this conversation?
Employment generating mixed use is just the simple.
They're probably gonna feel like they're gonna be held hostage.
It's, uh-
I mean, there's a balance here, I get it.
Same as our-
But if they're in-
Well, it's a little bit more prescriptive. It's the concept came from that economic-
Search it themselves as well as the city.
But what it says is-
They have it, but if they're not, then-
Employment generating use has to come first, office park, business innovation.
Not everybody's going for the same goal.
And mixed use centers, you can have high density, so although there's no new MF, multi-family.
And one thing you remember is that-
In these areas, if you have employment generating mixed use-
He's already got the-
It can follow. You cannot precede, cannot come-
Is there any kind of pressure in the city that they want?
And then J. B. Jackson also has those zoning entitlements, so it's not like- Yeah, I'm not reading the TTK. If they wanted to come and have these townhomes, we would reject, because that's not our business. So you've got entitlement for that industrial already. Where is my number? Your neighbors do, and you may want to have that as well. So residential mistral, employment generating- Is limited to less than thirty percent of overall development area by square. By square.
Right. Same as we-
And what we tried to do with the Hoover property is-
Um, residential.
You know, we kind of set the stage with the industrial zones that are already-
No, it's Murphy. It's like how much of this business innovation.
That the Lidle Creek was a good, kind of a good boundary line to continue-
This is what we took from the Mr. Colson.
Allow certain-
Let's look deeper into that one.
We did want to not-
Commercial to the corner for that intersection of two major arterial.
Not to do that, but Colson's-
And then for the balance of the Hoover property, we showed them that triangle of a Belem Road, Manchester High.
So that's a good conversation that Greg won't be talking to you all about, because you see the area that's EG.
To transition back to the residential with auto urban residential there.
How do you make it happen? And so, you know, what we don't want is, okay, so EG, well, I'm gonna go ahead and build my park and take a townhome, and now somebody else has a different employment generating. That has a commercial retail.
I would like to have a certain-
We're just so used to seeing all those.
That way you don't have one income generator come in, and then we get a lot of the part of this like casual.
So it's very high level, umbrella level. So here is legacy. Do you think of it in terms of AUR, you know, the residential? If Legacy comes in and develops here, if they do, then what does that look like? It kind of follows the color case, like your yellows, golds are residential, your very- They develop, they're there, can then the- Blues are industrial, gray, I'm sorry, institutional, and the grays are your industrial. So then a total solving, anticipating this. And then we want to ignore. So, yeah, the business- So, sweetie, I don't think the key is like higher, because he's already got- Playing for somebody's property who doesn't want to. I mean, I- Would encourage them to, so there's no winners, losers kind of- We started with the comparison of what was the old land use map, and then we compared it to what was our sounding map. And then we started going parcel by parcel, so that was kind of the first thought process.
Would hear me about this, let's say.
Was what was our original vision. Let's look at the context of what's around it. What is the market, what are we getting questioned about on a business basis? Yeah, what part of the area?
We don't have this big economic development.
And that kind of helped inform us to what we were seeing in the vision. So a lot of these bigger, larger areas, not necessarily-
I want it as hard as possible to get them in.
Do you actually have a seat bone, not just a-
Okay, hold on, Morgan. So I'm gonna get you like, I'm getting into thirty percent. When you say, what do you think?
The start with yellow, the AUR is your higher density housing.
I'm on the record.
The stupidish, the employment generating is, but again, this is probably the biggest change that we've ever seen, because your business innovation is kind of industrial jobs, and we've had those before. So we said, because residential retail, commercial uses are supportive to the employment generating land use. It is to have jobs, but also that whole neighborhood concept where people can buy to- So we're not allowing any residential to employment generating. Buy your job, you can close buy your job. So in order to create that kind of environment that- This is what we're gonna ask you on a day where we-
But the problem, I understand on a twenty-four thousand-
So we're gonna have higher density houses.
We're not gonna have any residential.
We would like to see in that purple area and not in the- In a CO.
But you have to show a commercial aspect by talking before we add-
And it's, yeah, it's not commercial because commercial follows it, but it's-
Income generating.
So if we improve, let's go down to medical center, let's say we improve the fountains. Yeah. We have a kind of a really large EG area, employment generating areas on the left half.
Two thousand rooms of apartment complexes before the next income generating. And now you have an apartment for this one income generating property out of the cradle. And so now you've kind of slanted the, there needs to be a percentage of developed income generating property before we allow any-
Percentage, I would ask to take it out.
Yeah.
So you want it.
Yeah, I want to say that.
Yeah.
Probably to try to work on and get that to play in and actually lay it out correctly. So we found that if they know who's building these areas. Office space, something that generates, you don't have to bring the- Saying, hey, you know, this is the map.
Well, I, we don't know, I don't know how you make that zoning. I can link the physical structure. When we say high density housing, if we still have any sort of the boundaries of our sewer allocation, that does lead to them up here for all to go above and beyond. But we're hoping at some point, we can get a near future, not so far off the future, that issue will get resolved, and hoping that sewers- So it may be something that is not gonna develop right now, and maybe sewer will get fixed in five years or, you know, eight years, and then that'll be the time when maybe that property is ready to develop.
This is the area, great. He was, he was. That worries me, right?
Sewer build over here may hold potential. I mean, it would be a costly decision, right?
It would be.
Because the design guidelines would-
But when our townhomes are under the five-year term.
German term. If they have such challenges, it's because they didn't have the support.
But here's the demand for office. If you build it, they will-
And I know that was- You're right, it goes off with-
Class A, I mean, class A, there's a lot of demand, but-
Side demand, they're always-
I think, so depending on who's talking to me here, they're trying to convince me there's no demand. It's on the sewer. Especially COVID. And I live from home, State Farm's not coming on back. I don't know what's gonna happen long-term, short-term, but the answer, I don't think you make a decision.
But you're already starting to see class A about this phase, because there was, at first, there was a peak efficiency of working home, and now the further time has gone by, the efficiency is breaking down. So people are forcing them, we're looking at some back to the office to recreate efficiency.
I'm very excited about this one. So is it schools?
So I have another question you might be getting to this if you're going to see what's on. They have all boundary plan, like the old boundary lines.
It helps them, because everyone's kind of master planning, future planning for their departments, and it kind of gives them an idea to where we can count on it, kind of having some-
And now the expansion border may move in. So does that person now not have an ability to get an extent?
Are you talking about future study area?
Urban growth boundary. So this is, the urban growth boundary is represented by the end of the future study area there. And so, no, the curtain is still recorded, it's still our document, it's still what we go by. Essentially, what we've done is we've studied what we can annex the next twelve years. So in terms of leading the landowners, we've held public outages, we have police cars, we have schools. And so what this is saying is- This is twelve years, we want to go to here, but we don't want to go to here. And the whole variety, they just kind of collected their comments and prepared a document that responds to their questions and comments that we published with them.
Well, MMC was one of those that was like this. It was within their growth boundary originally.
It's almost like an FAQ. You have questions about the AUR, the designation, why did you do that? Why do you have your forty percent? And so you need to move it. And it kind of puts them into making- With MMC, of course, there was property nearby that was in the urban, that was in the area that they could choose as well. So he says, absolutely, we can move it, but let's study not just one parcel, do it for one person. If there's an interest, we need to study the whole area and shift the line. But what we can say with confidence is what's inside this line, we can annex and- As we know with the confidence plan, there's, yeah, it is to be flexible, because we don't have a crystal ball that we know what the future's gonna look like. So we don't know what market trends, we don't even know if COVID's gonna come or not. So what we did, when we did work on it, we did say- So it does allow people to be flexible even with the line. It just says you can study. It was not part of what we saw as our vision, but if there is a demand to start moving further, we could do that.
We dealt with that, what that looked like. Probably, I didn't know if that was a bad idea. They did take time, master plan, master plan. Huntsville was really, an example that we really saw.
What did they have?
They had a little mixture of everything, that, you know, they had office.
And then the other flexibility that we wanted internally, not just use line, but what I found when I was doing revisions to the map, McDonald was still the planning director, was that you'd have commercial here, but yet it was AUR proposed. So it would be like these really, really longer changes right across the street. So we built into the document that, you know, this might show commercial, but it makes sense, and it's like a transition, it's like a crosswalk. We can say that that is consistent, because it is something that contextually would work within that area, so we would not stand up on our staff report and say, this is inconsistent because AUR versus commercial. So there's a bunch of those types of reasons for flexibility that you want to stop. And some of what I'm hearing- We're trying to not get to the planning commission, since we're trying to have a clear vision, we're trying to get rid of the ultimate stakes, we're trying to build flexibility, we're trying to provide some controls, it doesn't scroll. And with all those moving pieces, this is what we created.
Is it residential or?
Here's my fear, Greg. We approved one economic development project, whatever it is, just one economic development project, and then right behind that project, you get all thirty percent of the multifamily or the residential coming in all at the time before.
That's what that means.
So then you-
Mostly sound industrial. Yeah.
Yeah, and probably-
A lot of that area was down.
It's Joe Swanson's picture station, that's what we're working on.
A lot of the area that's-
Residential has maxed out, but nothing else has come in behind it.
And now, and now here we are, ten years later, we're putting residential back in there.
We don't mind looking at, we had, we had numbers in initially, we didn't know if that was confining, if it didn't allow us showing to be able to master plan it and work with the developer as much. The thought is that it's master planned at one time, and that we not actually just go in one parcel at a time. It's actually master planned. We don't mind.
Master plan would be okay, but I can guarantee nobody expected that many parts.
And then, and then the other piece of it goes back to us not-
No, it, no.
Not supporting the ending of this master.
Employment generating that focuses on employment and jobs, so residential is a component of the secondary. So the primary is jobs, the jobs-
That's what we actually say, we don't support that residential.
Number of jobs, can have fewer jobs in a number of houses.
So I think that's what I was saying earlier about, if we're gonna build this direction, there's gonna be a timing thing where we say, we're okay to wait, and we're gonna change this map. We're gonna wait on the businesses to come along. But we don't mind, we can add the fountains. We can, should, kind of look at business.
So we had to generate so many jobs. But our thought was, is-
What they're taking down, whatever their financing piece was, and then we had the
ability, because his next thought process is-
Your point is we'll take that, that's what we're saying on both right now.
Building where there's offices on the bottom and then townhomes on the top. But there was kind of a stipulation with the city before you go-
You gotta get these jobs in here first, and then you can do the next step. So that's what's occurring is now, I'm, yeah, kinda do this, kinda do that.
Right.
I was gonna say what's important too, is a future land use map. Most of these properties on this side already have a zoning on them, so they wanted to move forward, but the zoning they have now, there's no reason that-
I think in that instance, that had more to do with what was-
This comes into play if they want to change the zoning. So there is the question that, what if this parcel is ready to move forward? This stuff is still kind of a few years out. They have their current zoning.
You know, hopefully with the zoning, you-
So we're saying that, building your current zoning for one zone is-
If you don't get the residential first, you get the jobs first, and then it allows them to do the residential, at least that's what I'm saying.
And if we decide that it needs a transition policy, there's no need to change that. This one is kind of complicated, because it's going to force that master plan has to be a component of it. It has to be master planned so we can see where that company's gonna go, and then where the houses go that support that. So it's not like the house is gonna come in first, and then everybody else, particularly with jobs and master. So that's what I was, I thought these are the houses, or these jobs. All of that was all due to residential. That was a loss. So what we described is, if employment generating, the high amenities to a center, so kind of like you said, it's a Scott's property. It needs to have employment generating first. These properties, it needs to be master planned, so it needs planning. The planners have to really get involved in how it's going to come forward. And myself personally, I'm kind of stuck with that, how you do that with the private development. Because you've got the commercial guys, and then you've got the residential guys, and they don't necessarily talk to each other. And we've, we've had one where they've gone out and found a job generation, which is another office, to complement their townhomes. But it's been a six-month discussion, struggle for them. And they're kind of putting it together, but we talked about internally, probably it's going to be one of the next things we do in the next couple of years, is found bubble plan. So planners will be doing the master plan and area plan, so that we can really lay this stuff out. And then people will then know what's expected and where they do that.
And the change we were talking about, are we ready to invest in the city to really go after those type of opportunities? Because the first thing they ask when we're standing on the property with them, how long will it take me to get sure?
Legacy was in employment generating, and I have to make it have a housing component, and that sports entertainment, with job creation.
They say great opportunity.
Yes, stuff in the northern part there are areas where people come in and work through.
That's kind of the process to your point, Jamie, is they're introducing it to the city.
Just so you know, how we're going to quickly, so we're going to use this report or this addendum. It's going to become an addendum to chapter four. So basically, we're going to insert it, because it'll be on the website. And we don't really give out or sell physical copies of the comprehensive plan. But this will become something with chapter four. And where there's any conflicts with existing, this will supersede what's already there. So when it comes to land use categories and descriptions, it'll supersede the math itself.
Not entire, like individual residential design, but like a whole.
We've got, it's supposed to be updated from that chapter, so this will be what this test is. There's other sections in that chapter that we still have to, there's some gold in there. So there are elements within our existing chapter.
Different eyes, so this council may think that something is definitely employment generating in five years from now.
Well, we did, we also realized the guiding principles of the map, this map is.
I think at this point, if something, we fought off, not fought off, when we went through the employment generating, we kind of need to back it forward. Margaret Ann Sankey, what is that really? Matt Taylor's saying, what is that?
Yeah, I mean, you can read through chapter, almost like background.
What we see on our, really, when we're sitting down with the developer, going through what they're offering. You know, a lot of, a lot of the, what we see is a master plan in mall, that's really.
I think everything, everything. I was going to say something, but I said.
I heard about this by word or something.
Everything that a developer.
Pictures and pictures.
No, they're not in there.
Allow them to build that.
So what I would say, we have development types, we can add these to it if you think.
There's very little that will remain in this chapter anymore than other than various background information.
Office parks, business innovation, research centers.
Most people, when the good section is the map, it's the map and the land use descriptions. I mean, that's really, every comprehensive plan around the country, that's what they really use.
On owner of my house, supporting amenities, which may include first floor retail office. So this is what we say it needs to be, but if there is like additional or different.
Hundred jobs or more.
Right, that's what I'm wondering, like, our council now may say you need two more jobs, but.
And it's suggested, I mean, again, because we found that we're really hard and fixed to this one classification, even though another one might fit. We modified it so these are recommended, suggested general classification. For each category, it's got its own list of suggested zones.
Are you actually bringing it, are you looking at, we're not able to.
Hard and fast line, RS 10 is in.
Yeah.
Supporting residential, but RS 8 is auto residential.
Well, the difference between these two. This is the AUR, all in part of urban generating.
So we look at all those, we sit down, talking to them, vetting all of those things out before it gets to you to have to decide whether that is or not.
So in between, yeah, over the last several months, you know, we've been working to find the map and the test.
I think, I think there needs to be a standard definition.
Getting fixed back from some of our members.
An excuse is to build a apartment complex with a smack of a face amount of commercial, but it's got commercials, so it's theoretically used.
Made a few adjustments to the map.
There needs to be some kind of percentages.
For example, we had all of these two parcels as suburban estate.
Hey, we've got X amount of commercial, X amount of class A, X amount of condos for sale, X amount of multifamily units. That would be a mixed use apartment complex with some other usage.
So we left the suburban estate adjacent to the creek right there, for the large lots adjacent to the creek. But then suburban residential, which is still a big lot.
Right, that's how they do it, that's how they bail out.
So it's not just like you have to eat your vegetables before you get your dessert. You have to build this stuff that nobody wants to build. How do you make that stuff make money and incentivize instead of money?
They incentivize because they got to get some apartment complexes, that's their incentive.
Yeah, if the street malls were, you know, offices, they'd build those instead. So how do you, I like that, like the positive side of the increase.
We do have characteristics of mixed use in here, well, which are pretty, I mean, you know, we, we struggle with the, what's required and what's encouraged because the current document says if it's 2.7 to 3.2, it's only implies if it's outside of that, then it doesn't exist. But we do have characteristics of mixed uses here, and there's a lot of details, but even it talks about structured shared ownership.
Yeah, and that's what we want to do. We want that, we want that more for the developed community, just like we want for y'all, so that they, they will know what our condition is based upon. Based upon what the map is, what our vision is.
And another part that talks about mixed use, which is not very much on here.
They're not focusing on just anything, they're.
Like Henley Station.
Me and y'all.
With the properties already, it has the entitlements from multifamily, they can come forward with apartments or townhomes now. They already got that zone. So literally is if somebody's wanting to change what's there, or like if you want to change what you've already got built for, or you want it to be annexed, let's see what our vision is.
So I would be curious, back to your comment, I was going to ask this before you made that comment. Is, in a lot of this whole family, that is outlined, owes 20,000, is that already zoned? So we can check and see what that.
Yeah, we did not do any new.
We've, we've.
Yeah, it matched what was zoned, it was not.
I mean, we had them.
Or what was existing, what was already part.
You know, just, you know, we thought the townhome, the Washington one, was really, but then when we got into this area, because of different financing that's involved in mixed use, it's a very difficult development because of all the different types of financing.
This is where we went parcel by parcel and looked at the zoning map to make sure that, you know, if something was designated as multifamily, and had that zone already.
As we talked to the chief developers.
So for examples like that, that's undeveloped, but it's already done multifamily. You know, it's kind of pan for bell tower apartments there, but there's also additional multifamily there. And so, you know, we wanted to be consistent, to be honest, but we, I think experienced that making a place and creating a standard, even if it takes time, is worth it. And so, it's still, it's still things that we need there. So things changing, but it was, you know, that was a time where we didn't ask for, we're going to build in some kind of time change. We had a vision, and actually, Joe, that, there were people before us had this vision, and we had a way off, and we had to go through this.
Sometimes we gained where we shouldn't have.
There's still a few that are vacant, and they're squashed.
But we learned, and I think that there's value in that. And yes, it was.
I totally agree, but we'll probably do that as a best effort.
The base information would all be the same, but it's.
We're seeing, so you know, the sport property.
Yeah, tell us if they see anything that is. Well, Rena said.
When I was sports, said, yeah, me and my kids, we all want to hear what we want to hear.
You can go check with Dad. See if it's okay.
So.
Carolyn's got a little.
So we're sitting, so we're still talking about the property, because we're going to take down 250 acres. So after the first meeting, we're sitting down with them to go through the hordes, to just bring them. Yeah, and that's because they, we also, so now they say, we don't want to.
You emailed the question.
And we like people that make three hundred. Hey, we got, we got about five more minutes, and then we're going to switch tables. This has been a great discussion. The objective is for you guys to get comfortable with what we did to go through the current uses. That's, was it done, all the apartments, all that, there was a lot of fog going in, so when we presented this, it's not consistent. You know that it's been something, it's been added, gone through by everybody.
I think it is a B, but also, if y'all don't support a project, to be bluntly clear to planning commission, council, not just this isn't consistent.
City limits project.
We'll get there, and you know, MMC, I think we just think it was a good use, we just didn't think that use.
So you'll have crowded pockets.
So during that, we did, we laid all of this, all those things out for you guys to consider.
The sketching we're having right now, mission accomplished, because we talked about, what is this type thing? Instead of like where, like we've been, you know, we don't have to know the answer to this.
Well, like, if you were to clarify, right? If Clary Park passed the first time, the planning commission, Gary got up there and tried.
Big parcels.
The big parts in the.
That's the Jones Foundation property. And Swanson, that area for the county, Swanson's actually pending, depending on the request of the county.
I mean, Gary thanked the old members of the plan.
Was that PK? No, I'm including myself. Yeah, what we try to do, Sean, really is, we don't want, we don't want it to be, we don't want it to be now it's planning commission staff back and forth. So we try to make sure we present that these are the things that we don't support.
Well, anytime there's a.
And this is why. So that that becomes.
Anytime there's.
Planning commission.
Property that.
I mean, planning commission staff.
That was kind of a quiet thing with the Haynes project.
Exchange of zoning request information.
So when I go to council, I'm careful, because my relationship with. Okay, gotcha. But really, so council is too, so you're kind of like.
Well, we'll lay out air, wasn't it? Yeah, that says he shouldn't, this is probably not the best highest investment you've been talking about there. There's inside infill service line that are in the county.
Well, because the urban growth boundary is a legal line, I mean, the state says, this is a line where you are going to say you're going to eventually grow. The city doesn't have a whole law to sit about that, because it's already been determined that this is a huge growth.
So any other questions?
So it may be a 25-year or 50-year growth line, but so anything that's outside.
The thing with auto urban is, I know.
Do you, we want them to approach into our area.
You're trying to restrict it, but we're really, we're looking at no townhomes on urban, and we're thinking of a way to allow it. So it was actually a way to be progressive and not restrictive, like initially it was not.
They have problems with us, you know, the county road.
There were ways to allow us to plan it, allow us to.
And they go ahead and approve them.
Not ten acres. But allow it to be an integrated community.
It's only if somebody wants to come in.
But it is a way to allow it, not a way.
We don't have any.
Otherwise, because we started.
We can, so that's the way to handle it. So that's the other key law, though, you can't force a property into the area for longer.
Right.
So I guess what you're wanting to put that out, some of the tier where.
The county will come put a bunch of houses out there.
The counties sort more, house, and we're also construction. A lot of that is, you can have right next to where we. It's what you're, so that curb appeal. There's a great town that I love right across from Central, that town, but they blend into the community really well.
Yeah, so what I would consider, or the county's going through right now, and they're, they're falling behind us. And they're, they're doing a conference.
On the front.
So what I would consider, once this is adopted, we will give that to them to help.
And Main Street has.
Main Street has a.
Terrence just started. Main Street, Gale Street. So we have a couple of projects we're going to go out and fix for the house with. Make this easy on y'all. Here we are, we've already, somebody's still trying to make more housing, but it's, it's, you know, when you start asking for different types of townhomes, the developing community, really, they're not used to all of that. And so it's, it's, it's a, you know, we're going back and forth, and not that, not that, here's some examples, this is what we're looking for, to try to make sure we don't back up on what we're, what we're asking for in these, in these areas, so we don't get the same thing over and over and over.
The area.
In 10 years, now the city dates.
Hatch lines, yeah, that's.
It's.
The cities in the same.
Lots of in the North Island. Dates at the same time, and then we wonder where.
Because we had a good thing, we forced their types of houses, and that.
And when you look at the map, the lightest color, least density, suburban estate, huge lots. We won't see much of this. A little bit darker suburban residential, 2,000, 2,000.
Now we're starting to see those things that are.
Which is our largest zoning in our.
And interested actually doing them.
The dark orange is the more dense auto urban, and the flowers, the 6,000 square foot lots, or two family.
So I was talking to Harney today, he's out of Lundy's College.
And then dark brown is multifamily, there's no.
That's going to come back before those, is that right? The site plan definitely will. Yeah, so that all they've had approved, site plan wise, was just a foundation plan, that's key before you guys.
There's a park on the last mountain.
So, yeah, before they start going vertical, they'll have to come back to y'all with their site plan.
It's empty still, and it's not more.
I was like, Margaret Ann, that was a great application.
I think it may have to be.
Do y'all have any more questions about being a water?
Maybe add some questions.
A grocery store, I'm trying to get that grocery store to get us, it's across the street, yeah, and they're like.
They're down the street, aren't they, on the other side?
That's all right.
And we're welcome.
And we're walking.
Kids said.
That's awesome.
You gotta go home. You gotta get out of there.
Whatever Margaret Ann said about them, it's correct.
Yeah.
Orientation's always. Legacy, this is Cherry Lane that's not built, Interchange, Cherry Lane that's designed and built. This is River Landing, I think you guys look at recently, of course, the stones. This is.
I'm assuming she covers the gist of the land use categories, and the word.
Avenue.
And the, the big circles are, and of course, the dash line.
So, I'm not sure what else to cover. Schools, cities property that we're trading with Middleton's Electric, Middleton's Electric right now is showing a blue.
Yeah, so the urban growth boundary is the air, all the area in green.
I meant this right here.
That's just downtown core. So we have a couple of area plans that the city.
Yellow family called, suburban estate for very large blocks.
Adopted, yeah.
Back in 2017.
And it'll almost always be in the periphery.
They really focus on two areas that are on the fringe of the downtown core.
Come down a tone, suburban residential.
These are areas that are ripe for redevelopment.
Most similar to our 10, 12, 15,000.
They've already got structures there, but underutilized land, old buildings that are.
Take the color down a little bit further to the.
An area that's really, you know.
And that's the one that we've talked about.
Rejuvenated with economics of the area.
8,000, 1,000 square lots.
So we have the bottoms, and we have the highlands. The bottoms is across the street, and it's kind of.
Or generally downtown.
Make sure.
Downtown.
And then the highlands, four is ordinary, right next to housing, with also some mixed use along the roadways, along the major.
Now, playing development.
Brian, we have those studies on our, on our website.
But auto urban also, so when we started out, there was no provision for two-family dwellings or townhomes, and we started way too.
That's okay, I mean, what's really confusing, if you're not a planner by education, is that you've got all these lines of what do they mean. So what I try to, maybe just going from when I was at school, we kind of back it down, is that urban growth boundary is a legal line. It's by the state of Tennessee, and it tells everybody where this future growth potential is for the city. So this is it. Anything on this side would belong to the other city or to the county, but not to the most growth. In order to get beyond this, if there's ever growth, and we get right up here, and we see future to go beyond that, we have to get that line amended by the city. City and the student state. And then you have your city limit line, which everyone is encouraged to do, of course. So what we're looking for is planning within our city, but then also this area between the city limit and our future growth. And what we're trying to do is prevent this wall that happens with a lot of fast moving areas, and create kind of like a girdle or a boundary. We're going to kind of try to help maintain growth, be more infill, more closer proximity to other uses, to city services, which helps the city financially, because the further out you go, the more cost to maintain those. Put a fire station out there, put school buses out there. So that was the point, so this is not a legal line, this is a line that we are proposing as part of this document, to help guide our future vision for.
It's built for some multifamily.
And then within that, you can have, what, big properties or big areas, where you can do like an area plan, where you focus in with like a microscope, and do more refined planning for that. Like this is where we'd love to see mixed use building, this is where we'd love to see a shopping center, or senior housing facility.
1.2 to 3.9, except for persistence, we want to get flexibility, but also we need to give enough information in the plan to provide guidance. So the, the employment generating mixed use says.
We made several comments over there about some steps left, to go a little bit deeper.
We made several comments over there about some steps left, to go a little bit deeper out, but we're going in the right direction.
That, the employment generating use has to come first. There's no scenario where you can come in with a residential first.
So, and is that, and you have to build and occupy.
Certificate of completion, so, or certificate of occupancy, so it needs to be constructed.
111, 113 or something, is what we actually look at, so it's not much difference. This line is pretty, so, property that had been. This is not the city.
Yeah, so I, I had to call on somebody that bought a piece of property out. Before this line existed, they bought a piece of property in the urban growth boundary with anticipation of having an annex, and now this line's there, and he's going.
So there's the core design.
But the city limits are here, and you'll see that all the way around, so there's property that's still allowing the opportunity.
Because this is all this design, and I think this funding is only for this. When I look at it, if we've got money.
So we still allow it, so, actually, the city limits is about 68 square miles, and so when you're looking at, no, we still have some area that allows annexation for a property.
That EG is CEREC, so it's right there.
And with this GC general commercial. If you just keep extending along this.
And so that one is between us and.
It really stretches out a lot. Infrastructure.
The response time for your.
Right.
And that's a natural thing, if we're going to develop.
This is pretty close to this.
They can always develop in the county.
And this is, I mean, this is, this is a good way to outdo existing city limits, and while it may make sense to, yeah, yeah. Right, it may, it may make sense in 20 years to annex this property, but now it doesn't, and we're trying to really kind of fine tune what we think is, is appropriate to annex within the planning horizon of the, because whether, whether we have this line or not, I mean, we're still going to evaluate, like, because it makes sense to annex this at this particular time.
And you can kind of see what's going on on the other side of the line, where you get to some of the edges. So whether it's large parcels, we thought, you know, somebody's going to want to annex that and develop in the city, where they've got single family homes, and it's in a neighborhood, they're probably not going to, if they do want to annex, are we really wanting that one acre lot or that two acre lot? Probably not. So that's kind of where you see the line, you see houses right along the fringe of those lines.
And we want that control and what that is, and what it relates to source, loan services, was really a thought process and how much.
I think you can still look at, what we felt, we still have, how much multifamily do we still have that is available.
They call us every week.
So one of the things we talked about was scarcity of land, lands starting to become hard to cultivate to develop on, so they're looking at all this, I mean, they're coming to available land, to see what's available, but it's always helpful, and they call Marina, they call me, Joel or somebody, they kind of do the same exact thing on the county hall.
Don't cause them stuff like down there, so it's a big piece of land, I want to be in the city. Well, you're about a mile from the city limit, so we have to annex a lot of stuff between here and there to help, help you go back, to help you build those townhomes.
But you're saying over there, we have.
Business innovation does have more of a meaning.
Yeah, we work closely with, as a matter of fact, to a clockwork, if we wanted to meet a, an opportunity that just moved in, so we work closely with the chamber, they have the Puglani's map.
What we have heard from some people is that.
So we work closely with them, to say, how do we drive people to these areas?
On certain hands, and we have friends here.
Economic development areas, they know where they are as well, so they drive them to those areas. We actually have in each one of these areas, the bottoms.
And it made sense that it would be near.
And our property, we have a flyer made up that actually shares what acreage, where water is, all that stuff that the chamber uses.
Mixed use centers that focus on.
And we're also, we have some properties, some of these properties are on the, MLS, what's the commercial?
Some sort of, like first floor.
And Coach Dar, we're on there, so, yeah, so we try to drive.
High density vertical residential development with emphasis on owner, on rent housing, priority amenities, which may include first floor, so that would just be your general first floor reason.
The city really needs.
It's going to be interesting to see though, especially in the next five, 10 years, how much office development.
Yeah, I think there's city driven catalyst projects, and they're primarily in around the downtown area, Wendy's College.
I mean, I know certain employers.
The lands that were in the, along Medical Center Parkway.
Pretty much saying, you're going to come in no matter what, you know, but I don't know how, how that's going to work, honestly, because I think you're going to get a lot of pushback.
Just did one of like Burnob and Veterans Parkway, get a land swap with them.
Has said.
They had land that was more conducive to city.
I'm all for it.
We had land that's more conducive to corporate development.
But there are plenty of people who are not.
Whereas sort of this kind of a land swap.
And there are probably some.
So, yeah, I mean, Greg's more into that, but it happens a lot.
Insurance, I would think a lot.
Yeah, I think we have economic development.
They could, but I'm old, I'm old head, I want to be able to see marketing and talk to other, you know, that sort of thing, and so, and by our folks, there's some of them that don't like it, but they're going to live with it.
Most of you who were on the planning commission, at least the last year, have seen this already for our last workshop, what we found in the last year of working kind of with this map and developing community is, there were some areas and some things we need to clean up, so those were some of the adjustments that are now in this.
Charleston.
And I think one of the ones that we kind of found was going to be interesting, was the employment generating, where, so we want, the jobs need to come first, that's the main primary goal.
But I'm just saying, I don't know how much.
And so we've had housing developers coming in wanting to build housing in this area, like, you know, you've got to go.
Another thing that we have.
And so they had to go out and kind of couple with.
Indoor sports training facilities.
You know, organizations or jobs that were, they were going to be job creation, and came back with a medical office complex, commercial retail complex, and then the townhome complex. And we're done privately, so I just felt struggles. It was a huge struggle, they struggled, we kind of struggled trying to get to where we wanted to be.
But that thing's so large scale.
So, right, and the team was kind of kind of talking, maybe doing some local plans, and once this is through this process, and maybe looking at some of those EG areas, we can consider them, and.
Put us out front, government, we're seeing the development, kind of putting. So legacy, you know, where it is. I'm not talking about the townhouse here. So what we want to allow, is it's not constructive yet, and it's just somebody to say, well, over here, EG, I'm going to go ahead and put apartments and homes here. Yes, we're saying, first you have to have a master plan, so that's kind of a big.
Yeah, so we did the stakeholders, we did.
And they had caught there all kinds of questions.
Can I get a copy of that? What we can do is encourage them to do a master plan for somebody who's not interested to be in a part of it, because they're going to hire somebody to do it. But we want to encourage them to participate in the master plan, because we don't want winners losers, but if you don't play, you're not going to be a part of it. So master planning is required, and so you'll have to identify.
He's big than me even talking about there.
What we don't want is, okay, I'm going to go ahead and put, the townhouse here, because legacy's coming.
So the people that have seen this.
Or say this is some kind of hospital, which is, I think, as far as.
Right up on their question.
And that's all going, that EG over there is very long. Whatever MTE does, and so.
And then we had a public, public meeting.
Yeah, Matt's got it, you can have it.
With the IDB.
What other questions?
It's almost like an FAQ, so it's.
No, I love it, it's great. And my gut tells me IDB is more interested in BI than EG. Yeah, you wouldn't know that. But there was a town dress. But I mean, that.
Mass Vegas, Mass Vegas conversation, autourban, and the mixture of townhomes.
Understanding the numbers.
Not enough?
Not enough townhomes.
Okay.
And so, we worked through that, and that's the number that we thought, and that went, you know, we were going to, we said, you know, we do 60, 40, but to come in with some high amenities and things like that, you know, that's hopefully.
We didn't talk about auto. Would you have been 20 years ago? Well, oh, that's right, that's right.
A lot of that's going to be also, you go from.
Criteria for development. So this is in your packet for today, so it kind of gets into those numbers, and it's a lot of the questions, where do the numbers come from, are they actually doable, workable? And I think when we got to this point, when we came to this part of the vision, it was because we were getting a lot of feedback, that we really don't have homes that are serving our, our doctors or medical, the higher end community. We have a lot of townhomes and a lot of apartments, but what about the rest of them? You know, there's only so many houses in Maravella or wherever, and so that was kind of a way to try to balance some of it, and create housing for the middle, for the middle seat.
Real quick, we probably need to kind of pause for a second, so we can try to get a public hearing scheduled, if we could, so I'll turn it over to Kathy. Oh, Matthew?
Did we call this meeting to order? Did we call this? Great, great, announce the meeting.
So, so we had a public hearing back in March, you know, since then, we've been taking some, some feedback from stakeholders, we made a few adjustments to the map based on feedback, and based on some things that have transpired, zoning changes that have been approved or requested since that public hearing, and we've, you know, made a few adjustments to the text based upon the feedback that we've gotten from stakeholders, and so we thought, as, as a good belts and suspenders approach, that we would conduct a second public hearing, and we would recommend that we add that public hearing to our night meeting, schedule it at our night meeting in January, which will be January the 11th. If you feel that we're going in the right direction, we would ask you to schedule it for that evening, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the next motion for a public hearing?
No, I don't have a motion to set up a public hearing on January the 11th.
Second, and motion in seconds, all the papers stay down.
So the next, next step is from here to council, workshop 14th, to take, to do exactly what we've done, we won't do a sit down, we'll present there, and share the changes that we've done, and then so, from there, hopefully have some feedback. It's approved at planning commission, and affirmed at council, so there'll be two different types of approval that we will be seeking from each position and council, and then from there, so we're looking at maybe February, kind of as a tidbit timeframe, but we're actually looking to be able to start those, start that process. All right, thank you guys so much, I appreciate it. If you have any questions after, afterwards, please feel free to give us a call.
Thank you all.
Thank you.